Good evening, please rise to the platform.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. A special meeting in the Board of Trustees. This meeting was being recorded.
Is your mic on?
Yes, how about that?
Yes.
All right. So, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss the future of the independent Manans Village Justice Court. And so, how did we get here? Villages are not required to have a court, towns are. And over the last two years, I've been looking into the operations of the court financially. The court is unique as a service of the village because it has both revenues and expenses. And so, in looking at those numbers, going deep into those numbers, and trying to figure out exactly what the total expenses are, and then looking at what the revenues are, the numbers were accurate. And the village pays for the operations of the village court. For a long time, I believe, that it was a misunderstanding that the court actually made money for the village. It's not the case. If you look at the total revenues for the court, it does. There's reasons why that's not the number that actually contributes to the expenses. And we're going to get into that. This is a meeting to discuss basically whether we keep the court or whether the court goes to the town of Colony. All of us as taxpayers pay for the Colony Justice Court system. That court has two courtrooms, eight clerks. Each of the three justices have a clerk. They have a payment window. They have, you know, online options. They have, you know, a full system to handle all of the judicial needs for the town of Colony, eighty however many thousand people. The village of Colony, for instance, uses the town's justice court as its justice court. We pay the same taxes to the town of Colony as the village does. There are two things that, you know, that impacted the court and its ability to ensure that the fines that are levied are collected. The first, in 2019, and it's signed into law and effective 2020, was bail. Purpose of bail is to, one, ensure that people return to court. And two, it also permits them to be controlled and the things that they can do, otherwise their bail can be revoked. Basically, it's the terms that the judge imposes on them, for instance, to not commit future crimes. The second, in 2021, the state decided, and the legislature and Assembly and Senate, removed a court's ability to suspend a person's driver's license for non-payment of the fines that judges impose. You can imagine what that has done to the percentage of fines that are levied and that are collected. So, basically, a person now, as long as they show up to court, and as long as they don't have a certain number of infractions, a certain number of additional suspensions, they basically don't have to pay their fine. Nothing happens to them. So, they took away two of the ways that we can be assured of collecting the fines that the judges imposed. And I'm sure you can understand that that has severely impacted the ability and the percentage of those fines that are levied and that are collected. So, basically, the state has given us an unfunded mandate to dispense justice and limited our ability to collect those fines. So, what happens from here? So, the law says that the court can be just basically disbanded at the end of the current justices' term. That term for the Manans Village Justice, Chris Plant, is up in June and effective the, just prior to the organizational meeting of the next coming year. So, that's why we're doing this now. In looking at the numbers, it, we'll get into it in a minute. It would be very challenging for the village to continue with the amount of money that we're losing on the court to go for another four years, which if we don't disband the court and we do have an election for village justice, that that court will continue for another four years. If the village board votes to disband the court, and we will have a vote tonight, either to accept that disbanding or not, the community can do what's called a permissive referendum. And basically, they can petition to a certain number of signatures, which I believe is ninety?
It's based on the number of people who voted in the last governor's elections. It's five percent. When we looked at it, it's somewhere between eighty-eight and ninety.
So, if a certain number of signatures want to petition to, basically, to put this on the ballot, then it would be on the ballot for the next coming election, which is obviously in June. So, that's why we're here now, today. So, Don, can you pull up the first spreadsheet? So, as I delve into these numbers, if you look at the total revenue for the court.
Go to the Acrobat. Oh, you have to share the screen and then Acrobat. The whole entire screen. Pick the thing. Share. Now, click on the Acrobat thing. There you go. Now, they're seeing it too.
Okay, so, here's the court's revenues over the last few years. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, the court collected three hundred twenty-five thousand and eight dollars in fines. The state of New York takes roughly forty percent of those fines. So, we had to pay them back, say, one hundred and thirty thousand, one forty-five. That left the village's share at a hundred and ninety-four thousand. I'll go to the next one. The total court salaries for the two justices and the two clerks for that period totaled two hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Therefore, the court was already in the negative for that particular year. Additional to that is expenses. There are Manans Police as court security. There are benefits associated with court security for their payroll. Hostage to pay for all of the summonses. There are supplies, et cetera. There's an audit that we have to do every year. So, the total expenses, when you get to the bottom, is an additional seventy-nine thousand dollars. Therefore, total expenses for the twenty-three, twenty-four year minus the revenue means a loss of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. If we jump to the first seven months of this current fiscal year, total revenues for this period were a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five dollars. A part that we contribute or that we paid, OCA, state of New York, seventy-five thousand, two fifty-eight. Basically, they took slightly more than forty percent. That leaves one oh two, seven forty-seven. Court salaries so far are a hundred forty-three, three forty-seven. Total expenses due to date for that period, seventy-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one. Total expenses therefore are two hundred and nineteen thousand, nine thirty-one. So, basically, for the first seven months of the year, we're in the negative a hundred and seventeen thousand, one forty-eight. If you annualize that, it's one eighty, twenty-four cents. If you figure out what that seven months is, and that trend continues for the full fiscal year, that's a loss of two, just over two hundred thousand dollars. Two hundred thousand, eighty-six, thirty-nine, ninety-one. So, it leaves us with a question. What can Manans do with two hundred thousand extra dollars? Just to give you an example of what that amount of money can do annually for the village, that is enough money to pay every street in the entire South End and make up the gap of the South End infrastructure project. In addition, we could fix every sidewalk in the South End and in the entire rest of the village. And we can buy a new fire engine at a million dollars. All that can be bonded and still be less than two hundred thousand dollars a year. So, the question for the board is, what do we prioritize our money for? Is it to subsidize the judicial system for our region when there already exists a justice court that can take over the cases that we have here in the Manans? Or do we feel that it is worth the expenditure? So, the next question is, if we disbanded, what happens? Basically, we would inform the town of Colony that our court is disbanded, and unless there's a permissive referendum and it goes to the ballot, that effective roughly sometime in June, they would start taking over their returnable base fee. So, essentially, if a Manans Police officer pulls over somebody, instead of staying in Manans Judicial Court as the returnable party, it would then say the town of Colony. There was a question that a resident asked about revenue. We would still participate in some revenue from the tickets that are issued by Manans Police. Okay, it's a very small amount compared to the total. And Manans would also receive the majority of the share of parking tickets and code enforcement violations, which are adjudicated by the town of Colony Court. So, there is some potential revenue, as well as the savings that I've already explained. So, that's kind of, that's what would happen. And that's basically why we are here today. So, the way we're going to handle this is, I'm going to, the last thing that I want to say, and I want this to be very clear. This is in no way a reflection on the people who work in the court or the two justices from the court. This is not about doing a good job, not doing a good job. This is not about performing, not performing. This is simply about, these numbers tell a story that this is potentially a service that we should consider not doing anymore. If this was a business, okay, and this was a segment of business as a corporation, we would say this is, this is just not something that we should do anymore. And do we want to spend those resources in a different manner? And so, that's the question here today. So, I'm going to ask the board members if they have any questions or comments. And then, once we conclude with that, we'll open it up for three minutes apiece for questions and comments from the residents. Chairman Buck said.
Can you address how the outstanding unpaid fines would be handled and what happens with those?
Yeah, so that's a question that we still need to clarify with OCA. But any money that the villages do, for instance, is still the village's money. It is subject to the breakdown of however the justices have determined, fine, surcharge, et cetera. So, that will still flow through the system. And we need to just clarify, you know, for instance, some of the cases that have been converted to civil judgments, how those would be handled financially. And that's a question for, you know, for us to follow up with OCA on, what's the decision to think.
Thank you.
Brian, can you talk about, first answer, how, what percentage of the defendants or those who appear in the village court, how many are village residents? And how would the average village resident be affected by this change?
So, roughly ten percent of the defendants, for instance, that we issue traffic tickets are from out of the area, out of this name. And looking at a very good sampling of the defendants that we issued tickets, for instance, to, and traffic is without question the majority of our traditional cases. In today's mail, for instance, the entire stack of, I don't know how many, a hundred pieces of mail, I think we found seven that had a Manans address. Out of hundreds. One in two hundred and fifty is a fair number for the number of cases that actually are Manans residents. So, the question, you know, again, is, we're basically dispensing justice for the region at our own expense.
And how would the average village resident, how would this affect the average village resident?
So, on the civil side of justice for the village, and really, the majority of those cases are either small claims or they are convictions. A large percentage of the apartments that are owned in the village are from corporations, LLCs. Those are handled by attorneys, and there seems to be no reason why other attorneys can't return to Colony Court for their convictions rather than our own court. Small claims cases are a handful, and again, they would also go to Colony instead of here.
Thank you.
So, I just want to make a comment that has been brought to my attention. I was asked how long the board has been aware of this situation. And when we started this discussion, it's been brought to my attention that it was said we've known for approximately two months. And I'd like to say that we were informed approximately three weeks ago from yesterday. Just want to put that out there for everybody.
Thanks. Anything else?
Brian, if we were to accept payments from past twelve PM and accept online payments, would that help in any way the shortfall we face now? Or would that just be too much to carry on with?
You know, we implemented that twelve PM cutoff only, I don't know, maybe six, seven months ago. If you look at the numbers for this current period, so this current fiscal year, they are actually worse for the same period this year as they are for the same period last year. So, does that have an impact on our ability to guess? Is it enough to make up a two hundred thousand dollar difference? I don't, I don't, I don't think that it is. You know, it's a big number. So, what the real impetus was to there being such a shortfall was the inability to suspend for non-payment. There's no teeth to the justice that we're imposing. Hang on, someone to the board. Okay, from the public. Go.
Well, now, since this court has been independent, Colony Town one, I'm going to express my opposition to the idea of having our town or village court system be a part of the town of Colony town system. Well, for personal, general welfare, faithworthy, and personal reasons, and geographical. Because we want, I'd like to see the village court in Manans stay independent. Now, I'm urging all village members to vote against this idea of being part of the town of Colony court system. And by the way, you know, I wish we were not part of the town of Colony. I wish the town of Colony no longer exists. I don't have faith in the town government in Colony. I have more faith in the village Manans. So, thank you for letting me speak. Well, how are you going to, how will you decide? Well, we'll make the decision, but I'm just urging you to do what I'm urging you to do. Thank you. Well.
Thank you for answering my question, Brian. But I'd just like to say that, having lived here for a long time, because the village is not a business. So, we shouldn't think about it's a business. And one of my other concerns is, if I understand it right, how many tickets do our officers write on average?
Forty-eight hundred last year, forty-four hundred in twenty twenty-four.
So, a lot per month. And how many of them are contested where the officer has to show up?
The number, like, for example, the number of trials we've had.
You know, when somebody, when somebody pleads not guilty, I know the officer has to show up at court or they just walk.
Yeah, so, what happened, the way the process works, there's the first appearance, where everybody meets with me. The officer doesn't have to be there. They either agree to a plea or they ask for a trial. I would say, I'll give you a rough estimate, Paul. Last five years, the number of times I've had a Manans Police officer actually have to appear and testify at a trial, probably less than five times.
That was my concern, if they have to go up to Colony.
Sure.
Okay. Now, something happens in Manans, we have officers that are too far away.
Yeah. Frankly, it's more often, we don't have that many trials. And Chris and Buck can speak to that as well. If we do have a trial primarily, it's usually a state trooper, somebody else setting it up. But they're not, they're not met. We don't have, we're here twice, twice a month, two nights a month. We don't, there aren't trials every, every time we have court.
Personally, I get upset every time there is court because I live on Brookside and it's a nightmare. But I think what Nick has said about the online and all this stuff, I think we ought to make an effort to try and do something, and maybe it's a process where we shrink the term of the judge. Sorry, Chris.
What's that?
We shrink the term of the judge for now to two years instead of one, and look at it a little longer than just two years. I mean, two years to me, I mean, I worked in the business world for a long time, but two years is not a study. Two years is just, okay, it's been a bad two years. And if we don't have information from three, four, five years, then I don't know how we can make a decision based on that. Just my opinion.
Let me, let me, let me address that. I understand what you, I mean, I've been doing this for a while. And it used to be that we, the village, had the ability, when somebody entered into a plea agreement, we had the ability to issue a fine and a surcharge, a state mandated surcharge, and the ability to suspend. We gave, usually, the judges would normally give them time if they didn't have money. They'd have the ability to suspend in the event that they didn't keep the agreement to make the payment. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, in that realm, it was a lot related to COVID. They took that consequence away. So, there is not the ability to suspend. So, I did something unbeknownst to the judges for a period of time, realizing that people weren't paying for a period of probably about four or five months. I was, when I met with the people, I said, I can tell you, I know what the fine's going to be. Do you have the ability to pay tonight? If they said no, I said, come back next month, same deal, but bring your money. OCA shut me down on that, because I realized that collection was a huge issue. So, we can't do that. We can't condition pleas on the ability to pay anymore. And there is no consequence for non-payment.
So, we need to go after the state lawmakers, our state representatives?
Yep.
So, I have a background in corporate finance, but not government. But I do have a couple of questions. One is, the numbers that you have here, have they been audited by an independent party for the ones that you have?
So, these are the, for twenty-three, twenty-four, they're directly from the financial results that the village created. They have not been audited or audited for that period, is not completed as of yet.
And then, is there a reason why the detail isn't there for the other three years for comparison? And also for the projected, and it's unusual in my line of work to put out numbers that are not audited or projected.
So, basically, all that's done here is simply taking the revenue minus the expenses, and that's seven months. So, if you project out what had happened in that seven months to twelve months.
Yeah, you can't always do that because you can have volumes that are variable based on the time of the year or what's going on. So, you can't really.
So, these are all salaries, so these are monthly people. So, none of these expenses are, for instance, one contractor's.
And you have some close days, supplies, some overtime, but okay. And then, the other thing too is, you have on your, like, net income versus loss instead of, usually, it's like a, what is it called? Statement of position, I think, what you basically put on the government financial instead of, I mean, that income loss is obviously a corporate term that you could seize. But usually, in all the other financials that are published for the town or the village, I'm sorry, you see.
They're not audited financially.
So, there could be something off with this and how you.
If there is, I would love to know that.
I agree, it's tough to figure this out without having a trend line. So, the first thing that stands out to me is, you know, last year was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar loss. We're projecting nearly doubling it, two hundred thousand. How, so, we don't know what the history is, but we only have the one, we only have one full year. We're projecting almost doubling it. How does that happen? And is there a chance that this could go back the other way?
So, let me answer that. So, for instance, in the two years that I have been investigating this, I've sat in on court sessions for both justices, both for DA Knight, which is criminal cases, for traffic court. I have witnessed the flow and tried to make suggestions that could improve things. I have made sure that I am well aware of the way that this works before just looking at the numbers. Okay? There's a, I have a lot of respect for the two justices. I know that it is a very hard job to have to come in at two in the morning and arrange somebody who happened to get pulled over and has a warrant out of our court. Over the last year, we have adjusted the salaries of both justices. We have, for instance, included additional money for the deputy court clerk in order to retain, attract and retain better talent that we were unable to find a person for that role. So, those are, those are two salary-related issues that are roughly forty thousand dollars. In addition, the security costs have gone up because we've had more cases. So, the time that it takes and thus the hours that the security for the court session, that's increased. The OCA people wrote to our court clerk and told her that she is supposed to be independent, and therefore, that she is no longer able to answer questions related to the village attorney, that he has to have someone working for him specifically that answers the questions and pleas for the village attorney, that she is not able to do that on behalf of the village attorney, and therefore, there's an additional person there part-time. In addition, I allowed the court to hire an additional person to work for the court to encourage some of the older cases to be collected upon. Those are simple civil judgments, and that person has been working on that, among other matters, that have increased that cost. So, there are basically two new people part-time that are added to this, plus salary increases for the, now, that is, you know, that runs the court. So, that's the answer.
So, you've added to the overhead without any revenue increase. And maybe that was the right thing to do, I don't know. I, you know, I can't judge that. A couple of other questions I did have, though. One, what is this account receivable balance? That doesn't throw up anything anywhere here. We're saying we have a bunch of money owed to us, how much is that?
A guy of a million dollars.
Right. And has any attempt, what are we doing to actively collect this million dollars?
And so, that's a conversation I did have with the court to encourage them to bring on another person whose exclusive responsibility is to create civil judgments. Basically, if we, for instance, and they have been, and they have been doing that. Basically, if someone's address, and they multiple times try to collect the fine, and that person's address keeps coming back as not correct, they have the ability to create a civil judgment against that person. The court can basically convert a criminal fine into a civil fine, and that then can be placed on a credit report. Now, it's an incentive if they go to try and buy a car or house or a credit card or whatever. That judgment is now there until they pay it. So, that's something that we have started to do. Uh, so that's, that's something that we have, uh, started to do aggressively. And I encourage the court to employ a person that specific responsibilities was for that. That's a conversation that we had with, with the court.
Or maybe subcontract that out to somebody and see how that works.
By law, by law, correct if I'm wrong, Chris, by law you can't do that. It, it has, it has to be done by the board. And I, you can't go to like the flex today to say.
Okay. And just one final question, if I could. Out of this two hundred thousand dollars projected, I mean, it's not a real number. You know, you're gonna have that six thousand dollar expense for this room, whether there's court here or not. Do we have a hard projection on this as far as, you know, what, what the actual projected income might be? Have you looked at this and broken out those things?
Are you suggesting?
Really isn't gonna be a savings?
Are you, I'm, I, I don't understand.
Okay. So you're, you're, almost a two hundred and one thousand dollar savings. You're not gonna save two hundred and one thousand. I'm just picking an easy one out. The six thousand dollars that you're, you're using as general ledger on this particular account or this particular department, uh, which, you know, you're gonna have that expense regardless. So you're not really saving six thousand dollars.
Okay, so.
So I'm wondering what else you're really not saving. We're saving money on the justices. Are, are, are we gonna save, are we really saving money on police overtime or?
Yes. It's overtime specifically to work this room or deploy.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, well, I guess I have two questions. The numbers that you have here are the fiscal year numbers. So they're different from the numbers that you report up to the state comptroller's office. Cause I went back and looked at the last thirteen years of court receipts and these numbers, and these numbers are not the same.
They're all from this, the OCA reports that were submitted and all of them are, you know, they send us a statement every month. Uh, the court receives it. It tells us what our share is, what we have to cut them a check for. It's, I mean, it's, it's years of history.
They're not what is reported to the comptroller's office. I can just say that. Have you approached, what is the town, have you approached the town about this? Because they wouldn't take our nine-one-one calls.
They are required by law.
That isn't a very good footing to be on when you want them to take on added responsibility. Just because they're required to by law, it doesn't mean they're gonna like it or be happy about it or that.
They don't have a choice.
They're gonna have to hire more people. So we're just.
I would admit that they probably should hire an additional justice. Yes.
So just by, by that, there's been no conversation with the town?
No, the decision was, was to, to figure out what we're going to do with this first and, and then approach the town. The town cannot refuse it. The town is required by law. The town provides judicial services for the village of Colony. Like.
So the, the town, I assume doesn't want this.
I would, I would say that.
But the town gets it. Towns, therefore tax rates go up across the town, right? Everybody would pay for this increase across the town. So.
Eighteen thousand people, eighteen thousand people, right.
Do you have any idea what the impact would be on the tax fare as those rates go up?
Our fiduciary responsibility is to the task managers of the village of Manans. The town of Colony has its own responsibilities and by weighted share, I would think that the, the, you know, with a full staff uh, of eight clerks, three justice clerks, uh, two courtrooms, et cetera, uh, what is the, the marginal impact that that does? I, I don't know what, I don't know the answer to that question. Uh, again, our fiduciary responsibility is to the village of Manans.
Right. But we pay taxes to the town, which still understand why the tax, another issue there. And there's still gonna be an impact.
See.
So, and back and forth with what the town's responsibility and what our responsibility is, how do our numbers and their numbers compare? Their ability to collect versus our ability to collect compare? Um, and you know, obviously are they having the same impacts from their court uh, not receiving and being able to collect that we're having? Where are they having a similar deficit? And having similar concerns? So the last report that's on the com- county colony website regarding the state of the court addresses from two thousand and nineteen that ended when Peter Crummy as chief justice for the colony court, uh, was elected to supervise her. That's the end of their, uh, their reporting on, uh, on the court. Uh, so, you know, I mean, they don't have those, you know, I don't know whether they think, I'm sure they have impacted in the same manner uh, as, as we have. Uh, they become responsible if we do not have a court.
Thank you. My, a lot of information to digest. Um, I heard about it a week ago and I've been trying to wrap my head around the pros and cons and benefits and everything else. Uh, I'm sure the, the trustees are, are looking into it also. I'm torn and I have a biased opinion. I wanna see the South End get new streets, new sidewalks, new curbs, everything that's happening with the project. So I, I have a, a different take on what to do. I also wanna make sure everyone has the opportunity and responsibility to actually delve into this issue. I don't wanna call it a problem, but it's an issue. Um, I, I respect the fact that we're looking at the numbers and we're making a, a decision based on numbers. I would like to make sure everyone on the board has a chance to actually look at them and ask responsible questions moving forward. Um, I know it's time sensitive based on, uh, the justices and their election upcoming. I would suggest that this be put off, perhaps make an adjustment. Uh, I, I like the, the suggestion about, uh, modification of a term for a year. I don't wanna lose another two hundred thousand dollars. Again, I'm biased because I wanna have the South End done, but I wanna make sure that we're actually doing the right thing. We're having a meeting this evening. It's off schedule for the community to voice their opinion. This is a select group of people that are, um, uh, here usually for board meetings, but doesn't represent the village as a whole. Um, and you're gonna ask the board tonight for, to make a decision on a limited amount of time. I just, I would encourage that we look at perhaps extending it somehow before this moves on further or you make a final decision, but I appreciate that.
We have, just so you understand, and I, I think you do, Bill, I want to put for everybody, so you understand with the timing and why, why this meeting is being held and maybe the board takes action or not. Um, the board waited till the meeting in March to pass a resolution, one way or the other. Um, that starts the clock for what they call permissive referendum. You have ninety days after the resolution is passed in which for the, 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 the public to put together, do a petition, the ninety signatures and ask to have it placed on the ballot. Um, the feeling was if we waited until March, it was going to put us for a couple of reasons. It was gonna put us too, too deep into the election cycle. Um, so on the eighty-ninth day, uh, that would put us presumably at or about the time of the election. Um, and it would give another, it would give another four years, it'd be another four years before, uh, this could be reviewed. The suggestion about changing the judge's terms, the judge's turn, I believe, is set by village law, by New York State village law. It's, it's four years. Um, it's a thing with the town, uh, justices as well. Uh, so I, I don't know how much discretion this board has to change the term to, to one or two years.
And just to add, if you changed it to one year, you would have to have a special village election in a year. And that costs a considerable money, uh, for election staff, uh, uh, equipment, security, so on and so forth. So, um, that's, uh, that's, that would be a very difficult thing to do.
I guess another question.
We have, uh, some people go ahead and say, oh, I'm sorry. Hey.
Anyway, I'm gonna stand here. Again, we're just hearing about this. The last week we're settled about the, the issues before. And it saddens me because you hate to lose your identity as a municipality. The court just doesn't serve this traffic, which you guys do a great job. It's not about having to pay the money, but like we said, it's civil. It's the other case that appears, people with families and children, you know, the little hiccups in life when they get to go down and see the local judge to get straightened out. Now you're gonna send it to, to Colony to go through all that. And absolutely, I am a business owner of thirty-six years. I run a successful business. And like this gentleman said, these financials are, are flawed. For to be able to make a good decision about it, they should have accurate information instead of numbers that were, you know, put together in-house. The shortfall just came up. I, I don't know. There's no history about, you know, where's the projections? The projections I, I believe are also flawed with that and not giving us enough time to sort out how we can take care of the loss or the deficit in the court. I think we one hundred percent should fight for this clearly to stay here within our town because you're giving everyone the impression this is just the beginning of the end line. Like, oh, the court's going, it was dispatch first. Now the court's going. What's next? Colony now is everything going to the town of Colony. At the same time, it makes us question, should we audit the town completely? All the departments? Where can we find more money to support the court? Cause the court's a very, very important part of this village, very, very important. And where's the money from the dispensaries? I know the one's not open, but we were supposed to get more money from the dispensaries too. That was, everyone was so happy that we were gonna get this extra money for the town and it's, where is that? Where's the, I think we just need a good account of, for the entire village finances, not just the court. And in addition, uh, it's, it just, it just seems to me that this is being rushed. There are so many residents that would probably like to put input in, to put the burden back on us to get a petition, you know, the ninety signatures, hurry up before the election. It should go the road. Absolutely. Everybody in the town should be talking about this. Much interesting happening tonight. Some awful lot of pressure on the board members to do this tonight. I think it's unfair. I think it's absolutely unfair that it's being approached in this. And that's it. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
Chris?
My name is Chris Flynn, elected justice here. Uh, I don't have much to say. I've heard a lot of very good, intelligent questions and observations. Um, I am not permitted to talk about money. And I don't view the court as a moneymaker or a money loser. I dispense justice. I try to do it to Bob Messer and I try to do it as fairly as possible. I've done that for the last eight years. But then I call twenty-five days and nights for the past eight years, every month. I can't tell you how many times I've been in here, two, three, four, okay? We do our very best. I think I, 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 I appreciate Brian's knowledge of that and his appreciation of that as well. The way, so I'm not gonna talk about, I, I do wanna talk about one thing though, that I think is neglected in here. So Susan Dubay, who in my opinion runs the best court in the entire area, she is amazing. Um, uh, took it upon herself over the past two years to put forty-four thousand five hundred dollars worth of improvements into that building right next door. She redid the office, she redid the ladies' room, she redid the courtroom, carpeted it, painted it and everything. Those numbers don't show up anywhere. I just felt since we're talking about numbers, we should mention those numbers. We were sent to receive another something this year, but in light of all this, um, I put a pause on that. The money's probably gone. Gonna do the mens man. But that's the way this goes. I understand the process. I understand the board's position. I understand Brian's position. You folks have to think about money. I'm not allowed to view court as a moneymaker, a moneymaker proposition. Okay? I do it, um, I, 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 I ran for, for office eight years ago because this is where me and my six brothers and sisters grew up. My mother taught, my parents, you know, they've died and are buried. Okay. But I gotta tell you, I'm really tired. So, uh, whether I run again or not is, is very doubtful. Uh, just thought that I should be very candid about that. Okay? Um, but, but I think this allows me, uh, to say, and Paul, you made the observation, this is your job. Well, it might not be my job. No matter what this war decides, it might not be my, I might choose it to not be. I, I, uh, uh, like I said, it's been a serious grind for eight years. I've loved it. It's been a great honor in my life. It really, only my parents and family. So when I say this from the heart, I was a government major at college. Um, and I think this is taught in every civics class that government's made up of three branches, right? The executive, that's Brian, the legislative, village board, and the judiciary, which is the court. And I guess that's in person of me. Those are three branches of government. It's always been considered that each of those branches of government is very important and fulfills a vital function. I'm concerned as a village resident and in June or whenever, that's probably, you know, fall I'm gonna be anymore is a village resident, just like you folks. I'm concerned that the village is giving up its autonomy, a big piece of its autonomy. And that is my, my major concern for this village. Um, is that I see that as potentially a slippery slope to go down, you know, what's next? I mean, I would tell you that I suspect that the elimination of court is going to have a pretty material effect upon the way the police department is, is able to run. And so I probably said too much, but I just wanted to give you the perspective of, of just me as a resident, uh, as somebody who has an understanding of how government runs and, um, someone who, who I, I agree, I, I, I just think it's a bad idea to get rid of one branch of your government. So.
I agree.
Thank you.
I, I, I just wanna say, I, I have been blessed working with Chris and working with Bob. Chris for the last eight years, is that one of those? Bob or God, I don't know. How many has been your boss? Thirteen, a hundred, thirteen. I will tell you, they are the two best judges in the area, bar none. I've been, I am in every court. These two are the two best judges in the area.
I agree.
With that being said, I will tell you right now, they are woefully underpaid. When you compare what judges are making in similar courts, Town of Colony, Waterbury, Cohoes, all of the local courts, city of Wobbly, a little bit different, but city. These guys are underpaid for what they're asked to do. Chris, I don't know how over the last eight years, you've been able to do what you're doing, twenty-five days a month.
Twenty-five days, days every month.
Twenty-four, seven. That, and, and you're called in on a regular basis.
A lot.
I don't know how they do it for what they're paid. The village is very lucky to have these two as judges. The question I would have going forward, God forbid they decide that they don't wanna do this anymore, which I would completely understand because of the amount of work involved, is who do we get to run? It, these are very, it seems like an easy job, put on a robe, sit on the bench for two hours and what? That's not what this job is. That's not what this job is. And I've talked, I've had several discussions, conversations over the last year and a half with the mayor, expressing it in that, you know, I mean, you look at these numbers now, I honestly feel that the judges, whoever that happens to be, whether it's Chris and Bob or two other people, need to be paid better for the work that they're doing for the village. That's, that's just my two cents.
So the, the statement was made that this has been rushed and, and I respectfully object to that. We have been working for the last year, quarter. Uh, I've had multiple meetings with Justice Flint and sometimes with Attorney Raphis, talking about this and trying to figure out a path forward. It just hasn't worked out. The numbers, like I said, for the period, uh, of this fiscal year are year-to-year comparison, Brian's expenses worse than the same period in the twenty-three, twenty-four years. So that is what was trending to result in this conversation. So, and to answer the question about what's next, this gives us the resources to spend on the core services that our residents use every day. Fire, police, DBW, there are infrastructure and there are equipment needs in all three of those that need to be addressed. This gives us the resources to make sure those needs are met. Period. Roads, trash, uh, you know, uh, parks, parks programs, fire truck. Our engine is from nineteen ninety-nine, right? Right, Nick? Right, Nick? That's a million dollars. That's thirty-five thousand dollars a year on a twenty-year bond, okay? They respond to a lot of calls and deserve equipment that they know is going to work. Those are the choices that we have to make. And these aren't personality issues. This isn't because we have any personality differences. It's simply, this is where the numbers are. And we have to make choices. We were elected to make choices, what we spend our money on. And it's our fiduciary responsibility when we identify a problem to try and figure out where the solution is.
I'm going to interrupt there because you keep saying we. Okay, so you just said we as elected need to make decisions, educated decisions. You've been working on this now, you committed to it in the office. Why bring it to the board three weeks ago instead of six months ago, so where we could all put the time and effort into it? Especially when you appointed me the liaison to the court, or you nor the court have ever used me in that manner.
I don't think it's appropriate to get into the personnel issues in an open forum here. If you'd like to talk about that, we surely can, you know, in private, you know.
So then I'd like you to stop saying we.
Well, each of us takes an oath, okay, when we are elected, to uphold our that includes a fiduciary responsibility, that is the oath you took. Kelly?
Can I ask why you didn't share with the board prior to three weeks ago? Have you been investigating it for one to two years?
We wanted to, I wanted to give the court some time to address some of the financial disparities that I, that I was seeing. And I believe in the meetings that we had over the last year, I had given an adequate amount of time. Especially considering the, the way the law works in terms of when the court can be disbanded. Go ahead, Paul.
So I, I appreciate you looking out for our fiscal, fiscal responsibility, but I think a decision like this shouldn't be made by five people. It should be made by four thousand people. It should be made in an election. I mean, maybe the taxpayers would, would be open to a percentage of a tax increase in order to support the court. You, you don't know because you haven't asked. You know, I, I applaud the work that you've done, but I think the direction for this situation like this should be, the village should be the one. I know it's going to cause a problem with the courts and, and stuff like that, but there's got to be a way around it. Then if we have, if it goes on the, if it goes on the village election and the village says, okay, we want this and we're willing to support it, you appoint a judge until you can have a special option.
I, I, you know, the residents elect people to represent them in government. That's why we were elected. If we put every single decision that we make as a board to the public, how would that be possible? That's not how government works.
All right, so you make the decision tonight and you say, yes, we get a petition that says, no, we don't want that.
That's government working.
But then, then what happens? Then it goes to the election anyway, right?
Correct.
So why go through that situation? Why not just wait till the election and roll the dice?
Because that's what the, that's what the law requires. If the village's life, we should take an action. It's permissive referendum meeting, that's when the residents can take that action, place it on the ballot as a question.
I can guarantee it's going to happen, so I don't.
Well, that's fine, that's fine.
But I can guarantee it's going to happen.
That's fine.
Laura, please.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. David's a favorable resident. Yeah, I guess simplistically, I look at it from what you said earlier, I missed the first two minutes. I don't hear well anyway. This, this slow run started when the state changed the mandate and you can no longer pick away licenses, rules, climate, and so forth, if I'm understanding that. That's what happened several years ago, so this defined revenues, that's been around for several years, right?
Fairly, yes.
Simplistically, and I mean our police force in the twenty-some odd years I'm with here has had an enviable reputation for creating revenue. They're very good at their jobs and very good at traffic enforcement. So if that changed that much and it's been sliding for several years, I guess I have to support the folks that are saying, let's not make a knee-jerk, a knee-jerk change here without further investigation. Because it just seems to me like as several people said, you can't believe this true just because all of a sudden somebody got the idea that, oh crap, if we don't do this by June, we're going to come. So I, I just, that concerns me because we haven't seen this come. It's been, this is not something that happened over the last.
Nick, I recall, you know, when I, in my prior, you know, rendition of the board, when under, under Mayor Bishop, he had actually looked at this as well, with Judge Rowley. And I don't know if Steve would recall, but even at that time, the, the court was, you know, basically just break it even. I don't know if Steve recalls that, but it was, you know, John had looked at that. Because that was a question in his mind, John looked, John liked to crunch numbers. Okay, and he did look at that and, you know, and he got together with Dave and, you know, that's where it was. So it's never been huge revenue against, you know, what we, what we, you know, what our cost is. It's always been just about breaking even. So with, with, I think what we're looking at is with the additional mandates and, you know, the, the new requirements that the state is putting out, including they're requiring an X-ray machine now, which will require somebody to man that as well. And when I look at this as a strictly fiduciary question, and then I look at what our costs are, when we have a multimillion dollar project that's, that's going on in the South End, and I have to weigh those, and I have to weigh those two things, okay? And, and by the way, there was, you know, there's a grant that Paul Tonko's office had basically promised us in the budget, which by my estimation of what's going on in Washington now, we can pretty much no longer count on receiving. Okay? And that being the case, we have to, we're going to have to make up that difference to pay that bond because that work has to be done. We're committed to doing this. Now, if somebody says, well, we'll just have a tax increase, well, that's, that's the kind of question we have to answer. It's like, okay, so we just say, okay, we'll throw, we'll throw, we'll do all this and we'll do this too. And, you know, when you get a ten percent, fifteen percent tax increase, everybody's going to be fine with that. That's just not going to be the case. Now, as far as, when you look at the Village of Colony, which is twice our size, has no police, has no court, they get all that, we are basically subsidizing them. We are subsidizing the Village of Colony because they pay the same taxes we do. We pay the same taxes anybody else that found a colony for less service provided. That's the way I look at it. And it's not, you know, and you can talk about identity or whatnot, you can, you can, you can discuss, you know, the issue with the dispatch. Our, our costs, I mean, are being contained. That's, that's the only way you can, like, each year, we've man, you know, managed to keep the, the budget, you know, without having huge tax increases, you know, keeping it under two percent, okay? If, if you don't keep adjusting, keep reevaluating, that's, we're, we're not going to be in that position.
Just for an example, all of our properties in the village send just under three million dollars a year to the town. Three point eight change, so.
So, so you mentioned we have this big project in the South End.
Well, you know that.
I know. So is that the only big project the village has ever faced?
No, it's not, but I'm saying.
So when we have another one, are you going to disband another department and fund it?
No, let's, no.
I'm just wondering, because that's what you're talking about. You're like, we use this money, you, you said, we, we can use this because we're probably not going to get that, something that was promised to us and we need to, we need to offset it. So, and you keep talking about this big project, and I appreciate that. We, we have to find a way to fund it. But what's going to happen if we have another large project that needs to be funded? Are you going to dispense another department so that we don't have to raise taxes to address that? I mean, that's kind of what you're saying.
So the South End project is the largest project by far that the village has ever undergone. Surely in terms of money. It's also one-fifth of our households. So I, I, I just, I, I mean.
It's just the idea that another big project is going to come across.
And we handle them at one pitch at a time.
And that's why I ask, are we going to disband another department to fund it? Because that's what it sounds like we're trying to do with this.
Thank you. Laura?
Sorry, Brian, you are doing a good job trying to pull this together. There's no insult there to you whatsoever. It's just, it's so major because you're trying to get this arm, one leg of this municipality, judicial end, just like Chris said. And it's a, it's a major, major decision. And to me, you can't say what's going on in Washington with the grant money. Because what I understand, because I'm in the construction road business, is that the grant money coming out of Washington is going to be for construction, for roads and sewers. That money's not going to be held up. That's what the information is. So don't, don't do that to the population, saying, oh, what's going on in Washington is going to dictate what's going on. Not true. Using two hundred grand, if that's what you're looking for, I don't know if there's a multiplier on that. You are not getting the roads paved now at South End for two hundred grand, nor the South Block's done for that kind of money. It's way more money.
That's absolutely incorrect. I went over, I went over the budget with the fellow today and briefly, two hundred thousand dollars paid the bond on six, six million dollars.
Okay, so six million dollars worth of work, so that's to buy a bond. So the two hundred thousand is being used to buy a bond.
Correct.
Not to actually do the actual work.
Correct.
So that is, I didn't understand that one first.
And that's, that's basically the scope of this. This, it's, it's hard, we think two hundred thousand dollars out of a six million dollar budget isn't, isn't a lot of money. But what it can reduce and return as an alternative to the expenditure is six million dollars worth of investment.
Noted, noted. The, the other information is a lot of the paving work and a lot of the construction work was brought to the village on the chips money that we get from the state too. So are we not applying for that money early?
That's two hundred thousand dollars a year that pays.
Okay, so this is all information that regular citizens and regular people sitting here that are taxpayers don't know where this money comes from to do this other type of work.
We're going to have a budget workshop, our board is presenting their budgets on the nineteenth.
No, the, the, yeah.
Eighteenth. Eighteenth. You're welcome to comment, listen in.
Thank you. And just one other note as well is that the court shouldn't be looked at as a moneymaking institution.
We're not looking at it, no.
That's what you had said, you said it's, it's been outside and it's.
No, I say talk about add revenues to, you know.
It's a break even is great. You know, if you can maintain it and the people are getting paid well. Because I agree, they're grossly underpaid. And if you can get justices and.
I agree. And, and, and when we had the discussion about an adjustment, I advocated to the board to make those adjustments. We did them because that was earned. No question about that whatsoever, so. Bill?
Well, like I say, now Judge Chris and the other one, Bob, they've been justices for a good number of years. And I agree that they're not being paid enough. And being a village judge is not one of the easiest jobs. And sometimes they're on a twenty-four hour, seven-day call. And I do think they should get more paid. And I think they should get more, and the same thing with their clerks work for them. I don't want to see disband the judicial system of the government. That's where our government's supposed to be at three granted, as you said. The legislator who makes the law, the executive who enforces or administers the law, and the judiciary uphold sides where the laws are protected.
And we will still have a branch of our own that's judicial, assembly in the Towne Colony.
But, but I would still say, I want to keep the village court system independent. I want to keep it, as many other people have said before. So did Juneau Price said the same thing.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
So you hired extra people and you gave pay raises, and now you're saying it costs too much money? That they're not bringing in enough revenue, even though for the last three years, the revenue has been going up?
People were brought on to produce a return positive to the expense, and that hasn't worked out.
I think a big part of this equation really could be.
Hello? To get us some money. Perhaps has there been any interaction with other villages or other government entities since that was just a universal problem? What are other municipalities doing to collect this money since it's a million bucks a lot of money?
There are several court facilities similar to this.
I understand that, but in terms of collections, has anybody looked into what other municipalities are doing for collections outside of just sending a note to show us some money?
We have banned bars.
And that's all you can do.
As you mentioned, that we, last June, Brian, Tim, and I attended the New York Conference of Mayor's Annual Convention. And there, there were not only seminars on this, but the opportunities to discuss this with, with other municipalities that were there. And they were all lamenting the same thing. They were asking exactly what you're asking, like, what can we do? They were suggesting creative ideas, but NICOom General Counsel said the same thing. You're bound, you're bound by this, you can't. You're bound by that, you can't. And, and everyone's trying to make ends meet with that. And we even spoke with one of the presenters, was a consultant that helps municipalities figure these things out. And, and they were stuck. I mean, even at the time, we, we were thinking what several people had said. We were like, we think what, that we shouldn't have to pay the Towne Colony for, for court. Why, why are we doing that? We're paying for two courts. We withdraw from that. No, here's why. We, we had looked at so many of those things. I mean, that would, that would be phenomenal if we could not pay for that. But that was, that was a, a huge thing that we couldn't do. Otherwise, we would have hired them to help us through the process. But, you know, unfortunately, it wasn't, it, it wasn't going to work. So, so certainly, we've been having those communications, we exchanged business cards with, with some of them. We communicated with municipalities that have done this kind of thing in the past couple of years and looked at how our village is either the same or different from, from them, and that's, that's helped.
Is this a public record, the people that you stopped us?
What?
Is there a public record to stop us? People are paying?
Is there a public record? You can take a civil judgment against somebody, you can.
New York State database or the village database.
They, they can transcript it to the police office, you can find it. If Chuck Price got a ticket, we took a civil judgment because you didn't pay it, it would be transcribed to the police office and anybody looking at you may.
Love that. And just. So the obvious question is why are we taking a civil judgment against everybody, right?
The million dollar money, I don't know. But I think it's important to record now is that not the forty-two percent of the state. So whatever's collected, forty-two percent of the state.
It's a hundred thousand.
So it's a hundred thousand dollars. And that is a question, if you can't submit to a collection agency, it's a question.
But what is, but what is present? And you, I'm sorry, Eric, you're not that stark, but you said something before about a civil judgment being an option. Why, why isn't a civil judgment, it doesn't make sense for fifty dollars? But at some, at some point, it's probably worth filing a civil judgment against people, wouldn't that be?
I don't know what, I'm not going to help on that end of it. I'm not sure that Susan and we can. So one of the things that hasn't been made clear is that another obstacle I would say is that frankly, I would say I typically defend it, comes before us is probably a a number of socioeconomic, you know, I guess, income or something. Very financially challenged. And so I would say, I would say that, that I, I, some of them are certainly going to be not paying, some of them are not paying. So, but we're following the principles.
Yes.
That's what we're conspiring to do. That's what we can do. That's, that's as far as.
If that's being done, that's what you do.
So it sounds like you're like a very angry, shocked back. And at some level, you have to strip out the emotion. Everybody has to see what happens, see what the difference is. You have to look at it then from a rhythmic system. I propose, and I form this question. The village has, and the village has a proven responsibilities to be a particular running this business. If you have a hundred thousand dollar deficit in next year, but you can't present a balance. So for all the emotions, you're gonna need to be on other things, which will also be emotional. And I hear, to me, you say that the village of Colony, they haven't lost their personality because they allow the township to deal with this, set as you're pointing out, a statewide challenge. I see some state logic. It's so restricted to the, this group. It's so restricted to this township. I'm not sure others to you when you're afraid of this balance, but knowing that they're gonna be looking at it towards a $1,000 debt. Be very careful because there are gonna be programs that are gonna need to be cut. That would be my. I think they're headed towards a smart business decision. This is a hard business decision to me. It's the heart of the village for me. But the other choices are going to be more severe. And I want to thank you for putting in the effort, because this is a hard decision.
And, you know, I, I just want to comment. This is, this is. This has been stressful for me personally, because I've given this information, and we've not all been able to last year. Steve, it's a private conversations I've had. We've been bothered about this night, about this subject. Because I see these people every single day. I enjoy talking with this, uh, a number of subjects, seeing him do his job. It's an imperative. The question is, what are we for going in order to survive? This isn't about just giving orders. This is about what we are giving up in order to keep this thing. That's the decision.
But I suppose again, Brian, this, I, I don't think this person.
I do. I have heard.
I don't think what you're doing or the board is doing, I don't think. It's, it's business, but I wanted, I just wanted, I want to show that there's another aspect to it, which is generally against. Respect, I respect that. And we're here for the share ideas. Well, I don't think this, you know, I, I've been talking to you. It's fine. If you guys decide to disband, that, that, you know, that, that's, if that's the rule of the people of this village. I'm here to serve the village.
Okay. Any final comments, thoughts from the board?
I just want to say I want to make clear, I'm not opposed to disbanding. I am opposed to the strategy that you took in bringing this to the board. I don't feel that I have had enough time to look at the numbers and go through all of it. I don't feel that the public has had enough time to digest what has happened. Uh, so that's where I stand.
Anyway. You have any motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll ma, I'll make a motion that the village of Land. Disband the village, and, uh, allow the two, two.
Effective at the end of June.
Effective at the end of June.
Second, I'm sorry. One second, that motion. It wasn't there. All right. So please note the record. It wasn't there.
I do.
Okay. So, uh, someone published, uh.
So at this point, that it, 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 the, any interested parties can petition to place a referendum on the ballot. It becomes, you know, the residents' opportunity to look at it and make the decision. I put something out this, respectfully. So if I understand this, that's a question from one. So this means that if there is a, say that the folks get together and sign this petition, that's when the people's putting out a ballot in June. Same ballot where you're electing a judge. So the ballot's gonna be, hey, you want to vote? And if so, who do you want to be your judge? Just sort of, is that right?
Right. And, and given that. You may not have a judicial candidate.
Because I wanted to disband it if we should say that we bring the judge from the ballot. And then a judge would be appointed, should a referendum pass.
I'm being asked, I don't know the answer to that question because I think it'd be. If it goes on the ballot and the, if there is a municipal referendum and it goes on the ballot, I'm just thinking of it. And the village residents decide to keep the court, I would think that a special election would have to be held in order to, um, have the elected judge. And in the interim, we have, since we have two seats, there could be a judge appointed during that, during that campaign. Because it wouldn't make sense, and personally, we usually was an example, at least. Um, it wouldn't make sense to have Chris Ron spend the time, money and, and make the effort to run for a position that Mayor Men will sit after the elections.
I believe, I believe currently there will be no judge on the ballot. The referendum would go on the ballot and then a statement would happen in a special.
Can confirm with NICOM.
Yeah, yeah, we can confirm that with NICOM. But again, thinking aloud, that just seems to be logical. Men will be, be, be. But the village would not be without a justice because the mayor.
The nation needs a justice. Right. That would be the determination of the justice and how the justice would be appointed. And then, uh, and then for the justice, you'd have, we'd have a special.
We'd have a special. And I, and I just checked it. Put something else out. So. And again, leaving this to the ballot, this place is in the ballot. We're talking about. So today got about 25 pages. We already started those rules of motion in anticipation of this happening. I would take big steps, but. So if the court, if you, I would say, you know, colleagues probably think, listen, listen, fish or pup bait. You get in your faces for money. So I would expect it on June.
Seventeenth.
Exactly. Seventeenth, June 17th. If there's no plan, if it's uncertain, the court's gonna take any existing one. That's not gonna be putting anybody in a great position. So, you know, but that's, that's just where we are. That's the definition.
As well as, as, as well as, oh, sorry, go ahead.
A progressive referendum just. It's measured, it's 90 days and it's measured from tonight's. For the petition to be filed with the court.
As, as well as.
And it is 89, 88, 89, 97, which is five percent of where the voter was last voted. This is a really massive task.
Yes.
The state, okay? Just be prepared. It's state. So the overtime, it's, it's gonna be necessary.
As well as, that to mention, the budgeting that we will have to do, which again starts next week. Uh, as we start creating a budget. Are we budgeting for a court? Are we not? And that, that will need some, uh, some guidance from NICOM on that, but that's, that could really throw it that is out of whack.
Who's gonna tell us the colony and when? I asked that or is that be determined?
Those are questions for Donald. If you can call him tomorrow.
I, I don't, Dave, I've never done this before, but I will find out personally. But to Donald, feel free to give me a clue. I'll be, I'll find out.
So if the, if the residents hope they don't want this man to do, there is a special.
That's correct.
Everything meets on, in some.
Regarding the issue, there again.
Well, everything doesn't wait till June 17th, because we, the, the planning that Chris, uh, talked about, uh, begins now. It's, it's already begun. So they're going to already be working on the things that Susan has been doing over the next several months. So if things get turned around on June 17th, that will completely change that. But all of that does need to happen now. We can't start on June 18th.
And the 90 days, I don't know. Let's assume the petition would have to be filed by, by roughly the middle sometime, uh, middle of May. Let's say May 12th or May 13th. I have to have the ballot printed by the end of May, or the June.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
It wasn't there.
All right.